We've called the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors February 2nd, 2015 meeting to order. We're gonna have the elected leaders in flag green brought up by Cub Scout PAC, 1838. And Mr. Tucker's gonna lead us into vacation.
Join me in the invitation if you choose to. From John Oxenham, the 17th century Psalmist. "We are writing a gospel, a chapter each day, by the deeds that we do and by the words that we say. We reap any harvest of thorns or of flowers, but we're charged by God to do our best every day. Lord, we ask that you guide our discussion tonight with reason and solidarity and, yes, with love. Help us understand that we are not competitors in our deliberations, but are seeking one's best for the people who listen to us. Amen."
Are there any requests to postpone? Any agenda items to add or delete? Put your motion through the agenda as presented. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
This time we'll have certificates of appreciation, special resolution presentation. I've asked Mr. Tucker to read this, and I think we have two Constitution officers here. Will they come forward, please, and stand down here beside us in front of us? We have Ms. Fay Barton, our Treasurer, and Mr. Jamie Timberlake, our Commissioner of Revenue.
Mr. Chairman, I have moved that we approve this proclamation designating February the 2nd through the 6th, 2015, as Constitutional Officers Week in Powhatan County. Whereas Article 7, Section 1 of the Virginia Constitution provides for the direct election of local officials charged with the critically important duties of the maintenance of public records, the operation of the circuit courts, prosecution of criminals, the protection of public safety, and the administration and collection of local revenues. And whereas Powhatan County's clerk of the court, commissioner of the revenue, Commonwealth's attorney, sheriff, and treasurer continue a tradition of local administration of government functions that predates the American Revolution. And whereas these constitutional officers, their deputies and employees who serve in their offices provide the people of Powhatan County with a direct link to their government and at the local level, unfiltered by bureaucracy and responsive to the citizens' needs. And whereas the constitutional officers embody Thomas Jefferson's ideal form of representative democracy which provides for direct accountability to the people by virtue of the people's right to vote for the constitutional officers. And whereas the constitutional officers in Powhatan County are setting new standards of customer service, innovative service delivery, and responsiveness that fellow officers and other public servants in the Commonwealth could well emulate. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County, Virginia, that the week of February the 2nd through the 6th, 2015, is hereby designated as Constitutional Officers Week in Powhatan County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board urges Powhatan County citizens to familiarize themselves with the services provided by their constitutional officers, and be it further proclaimed that the clerk of the Board of Supervisors transmit copies of this resolution to the Honorable Richard Cox, the Honorable Greg Neal, the Honorable Fay Barton, the Honorable Jamie Timberlake, and the Honorable Theresa Dobbins with the appreciation and respect of the Board of Supervisors for their services to the citizens of Powhatan County. Mr. Chairman, that is the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank the two of you for coming. We very much appreciate having you here. Please pass on to your staff how much we very much appreciate, particularly the customer service of both of your offices with your quick things. Thank you very much for being here tonight. We don't expect you to stay the whole evening. At this time, we're gonna have the first of two public comment period. We invite the members of the public to share their thoughts on matters and issues that are germane to county business. This is not a forum for criticism of specific individuals or attacks on any person or group. It is also not a forum for political campaigning or promoting a business. Please keep your comments focused on the issue subject, on the issue and subject matter of which this board has a responsibility. And please keep your comments to three minutes, and please state your name. Thank you.
My name is Katrina Blankenship. I live at 1612 Judah Road in Powhatan. Tonight, I would like to discuss several issues. First, at the workshop, we brought forth the question of the meeting with Mr. Altman and a man concerning Dorset Ridge project. Why did not the Board of Supervisors inquire during that meeting as to who the man was and what the meeting was about? Second, for the last time, we would like to ask Mr. Moore not to vote on any issue tonight, for this is a direct conflict of interest with him running for the Commonwealth Attorney's position in just a few days. Third, we would like to know why the county is ready to vote to redesign the county website yet once again, which has been done like two or three times already in the past few years, and spend over $40,000 that has already been spent time and time again on economic development. With our county so far in debt, how could you go to spend this much money tonight? Mr. Melton, this might be, you might tell me to sit down, but I feel like this is about the citizens of this county, and I think that we need to address this situation. It's very, very important. Fourth, I'd like to remind the Board of Supervisors that all of you say that we're seeking new business for the county to cover the economic issues and offset of the tax base. We have a new business that just opened here in Powhatan, a second Sheets location. At the grand opening, a citizen of the county took a picture and posted it on Facebook. It was of you, Mr. Melton, giving a speech. There were comments about you standing in front of ham sandwiches and not discussing pork barrel spending, but then there were comments about top sheets, bottom sheets, and pillowcases, which took the conversation to a very flirtatious nature with you directly connected. The thing that concerns me the most and most citizens is the icing on the cake was when Judge Sella said, and I quote, "Ran into Mr. Melton on the sidewalk one campaign season, and I had just cleaned up feces from one of my dogs, and asked if he would like a bag of the dog excrement as his campaign symbol. He did not think that was funny. Usually, he is a good sport. But that one did not go over very well," end quote. Later on in the thread, Mr. Melton responded like this, quote, "Paul, I now have some ideas for that bag, so next time we see each other walking, let's talk. Seriously, great investment by the Sheets organization for Powhatan that will employ around 30 people and create some nice extra commercial taxes," end quote. The conversation, yes, was personal between citizens and mostly meant in just fun, but tonight, I would like to say, Mr. Melton, you are on the Board of Supervisors and are supposed to represent this county in a professional manner. Your Facebook comments are directly tied to Sheets because they're all tagged together online, and Sheets is a corporation. Your comments as chairman of the board are so embarrassing to the community as well as to Sheets that just opens its doors. A suggestion would be to remove the unprofessional comments from this post, realizing how embarrassing this is looked to Sheets and to Powhatan County. Another suggestion is for all elected officials to be held accountable and to be careful and consider your comments on social media for the public to see. These are things that continue to prove that Powhatan has become a laughing stock. Why would a business want to stay here or even come here? This is a shame to the citizens of Powhatan County. I do have copies of this, if you'd like it, to prove that this was done. I'm very sorry to have to stand here and say these things. It is very embarrassing. We worked really hard for Sheets to know that they were welcome in this county. We wrote a front-page story for them, and they are in shock that these things were commented about and laughed about, and they were so proud to open that second business here. And that's why we're in the condition that we are in, in this county.
Thank you, Ms. Melton.
My name is Bill Cox, selling 1405 Giles Bridge Road. I was at the Sheets opening, Mrs. Blankenship was not. I found nothing embarrassing about the opening. They were extremely ecstatic about the turnout from public officials that were there, and to characterize it as anything other is a travesty, one more travesty in a series that we have to endure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Any other comments at this time? We'll move to item number eight, consent agenda. We've moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we'll move to item 9A, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. First one is Agricultural Forest District. Found on page 222 of your packet. Think we have several positions that were still open and we're gonna work on. Has anybody made any progress today?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to renominate Bill Seifert for the Agricultural Forest District.
Mr. Chairman, I did finally see what Randall Lewis and Jay, he would like to serve again as reefer. So I did get a chance to speak with him, so I would nominate him for a second. I guess it's another term of service.
Okay, and I think we have also have Mr. Owen Walker, who's been mentioned to. Mr. Latchey, can we agree at one time and make a motion? Do we need to?
Motion to approve all three as nominees.
All in favor?
Aye.
We want the item 9B, the Capitol Asian Workforce Department Chief, a local elected official, supporting a full-on plea out.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to renominate you into that position.
Second. Did I get a second? You did. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 9C, Social Virginia Waste Management Authority. At this time, I think we have an opening because Mr. Rafferty chose to leave the county and he can form an elsewhere. So I would recommend that we appoint Kelly Ellis. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 9D, Detective Leadership Counselor. I'd like to answer. We defer this, this opening is in my district, and I spoke with two individuals today who have asked, give them a week to consider the meetings. Do not take place until March, so we have, we have some time that we can do this after we defer item 9D.
You gotta give us a good date.
Till, uh, maybe March.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 9E, the Pivon Community Criminal Justice Board. Basically, this would be an opening for Mr. Moore, who's gonna be on the board after the 8th.
Two vacancies. Two vacancies in 9E.
We, uh, possibly have a motion to, for one vacancy. I think we should continue to leave the other vacancy open until after the election.
Then I'll move that we appoint Matt Wyler, our County Administrator, to the one position.
Mr. Chairman, I know that, uh, I don't know, and, you know, after here, of course, I read the letter. They had recommended, we've got two possible positions that are open on that. And it looks like Bob Beasley, now Judge Beasley, expressed some letters, at least based on the letter. I haven't spoken with him, or had spoken with him, to be appointed to the board. Obviously, he's changed hats from Commonwealth Attorney to the judge in the circuit. And then obviously, I don't disagree with your suggestion, Chairman. I think it's a good idea to maybe hold that other appointment open. I know I need to be elected official, but it's, as obviously, it could be county minister who can be on that board, or one of us can be on the board, because Mr. Moore is on the board. And maybe what we might want to do, I might suggest that perhaps maybe, maybe vote those up this next time to confirm with Mr. Beasley, that's the case, that he's going to be served. That would only leave then the issue with regards to, um, the, I guess, the governmental official position atop of my right, from either the board or the district administrator. And obviously, the election for the second district will be behind us at that time. I don't know who will be sitting in the chair over there, we'll have somebody sitting in the chair over there. So I might make that suggestion, we just defer both, just to kind of confirm that. I don't know if Mr. Beasley does want to do that. I assume he does. And also, the Commonwealth attorney selection will be on and passed. I don't know whether the Commonwealth attorney will be, might be interested in that position. I think that slot is open for that as well. If Mr. Beasley doesn't want to serve, then we have that. If he does, then we have possibly, potentially two nominations. I don't know. That's my thoughts. Thank you, Melton.
Any other comments? I agree with your verdict, like that, and you can't say he's a shot.
No, sir, I'm not. I have talked with Renee Nancy, and she's explained who can be on the board and what positions they do need. She did tell me that Judge Beasley did agree to be on the board. She spoke with him personally, and he did request that she be allowed to stay on the board. On the second position that you have, yes, you can appoint the county administrator, a real BOS member. On her board, she needs to have a judge, and she has several. She needs to have a Commonwealth attorney, not from Powhatan, but in her entire board. She needs to have at least one Commonwealth attorney, and she has several. She needs to have a sheriff, and she only has one sheriff, and that's Sheriff Neal. So she's asking, please leave him on the board, what you're doing. And so it is up to you to decide who you would like to put on that board, because she has all of her positions that require to be by certain officials filled. So do, uh, seek to appoint.
Given that, Mr. Chairman, are we comfortable with Mr. Beasley being voted?
That's fine with me. I don't.
Excuse me, hold on. Mr. Latchey, we had a motion that was made, and then seconded. Do we need to rule on that motion? Do we want to continue this?
It's all from the management's perspective, it's wrong, you know, if you would do.
You now made it pass. Right. You need to go through some of the permission for the one where they won't send.
We could vote both tonight, we could vote one tonight and wait for the election to not, uh, certainly we could, we could elect immediately tonight, and then do the one a couple of hours election, we could get to, with the Commonwealth attorney, with the panel, and then. I would draw my motion and make the second motion to the effect that we nominate, uh, elect Bob Beasley to the position. It's a great point, the second commission, the last one.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've noted you. We should pass this back to you. The last point we have, one we've done for quite a while, we really need to roll our sleeve up and get, and have a point to the county, the community action agency, and madler board, and have anyone been able to find a candidate who's willing to serve in that role. Mr. Chairman, I would really defer this position again.
Good morning, thank you. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes to defer this. Please, let's make sure we're really working hard to either fill this with someone, uh, who has considered the lack of that award, the criteria that we have, or has been selected by a group of people who has qualifications to represent in this board for this opening in the Congress, four or five months ago. At this time, a public hearing, ordinance number 021501, admitting the section of 80-1 definition of Article 1, general provisions of Chapter 80, water and sewer, water and wastewater, code of 15, in Acting Service Districts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The staff on this, on this item is Johnny Melis. I want the chairman to present the information over to Mr. Melis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ordinance 0-21501 commends Chapter 80 of the Powhatan County Code by adding the definition of Service District and establishing the Water and Wastewater Service District. A section of this code had previously been deleted by action of the board in March 8th of 2010. Tonight, you should have received a handout for page 252 of the Agenda Pack that provides Section 80-2 and 3 to read as follows. District boundaries shall be those shown on a map entitled Water and Wastewater Service District created by Dewberry Engineers, Inc., dated February 2015, which map is incorporated here by reference and made part of this chapter. The map shall be kept in the office of the Powhatan County Administrator or designated. Map shall be available during all office hours for inspection by the public upon request. You also should have received in your Agenda Pack a map of the proposed Water and Wastewater Service District. Planning Commission at its January 6th, 2015, meeting by consensus, and unanimously recommended approval of the expansion of the Water and Wastewater Service District as proposed in the Water and Wastewater Master Plan. Notice of the February 2nd, 2015, public hearing was advertised in Powhatan today on January 14th, 21st, and 28th, per Virginia Code Sections 15-2, 2400, and 15.2, 2402.1. Now I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Melton. Any questions to say at this time?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I have some questions. This might be from Mr. Melis, it might be from Mr. Latchey, or both at this time. I think I know the answer, but I want to just inform you. With the district boundaries, this goes to those lots or parcels that might be contiguous or adjacent, not in the district, but they're next to the boundary. Is there any significance or consequence? I know whether we ultimately adopt a, just as a quote-unquote plan or study. The point is, I guess, the question is, what's the consequences for those lots? They're outside, they're not included, I would assume, they're not even subject to hook-up, or, or do they gain some advantage, if anything at all, by being next to that?
There's really no advantage. If they wanted to actually connect, they would still have to come before the board to amend and ask, just like we did with Luckstone previously, where we had to come before the board and ask for permission for them to connect to the water and sewer system.
And would that amendment include, they'd have to actually become within the Service District? It wouldn't just be that they can kind of hook up willy-nilly, they'd have to be in the district and then authorize it?
Or you could grant an exception, in our code, it allows for exceptions, so they would not necessarily be included in the district. Theoretically, you could just grant an exception that allows somebody outside the district to.
And what would the standard be on that tone? If there is a standard?
Discretionary.
Okay, so it's discretionary. It'd be based on public necessity, convenience, all those things that the board would.
It's not even that.
Not even that?
Just discretionary, whether you want to include it or not.
Okay, so it'd just be broad legislative discretion, not really compliance? Okay. Second question is, and I know later on this evening, we have the resolution regarding the actual Water and Wastewater Master Plan. I noticed on there, obviously, it's got, it's titled, you know, passing the county Water and Wastewater Master Plan, then of course, it has the Service District under there. If we take action later this evening, before we, we have action on the floor with this, which, and then we have the action regarding whether, some debate last time, obviously in the workshop, some board members felt maybe it's a plan to be deferred, others felt maybe it should be a study, others felt maybe just go forward and adopt it. Depending on what the board does, what's the significance of that? In other words, we act on this first, and then subsequently, we maybe say, well, this is Water Master Plan, but we're gonna defer, or we're going to call it a study?
That master plan has no legal effect. All it is, is basically buying a preliminary roadmap of where you might want to go down the road. That's all it is. It has no legal impact on this Service Districts or anything we're doing here that, we call it a plan, but you could call it a study, or you could call it anything you want. It all it is, is a potential guideline or roadmap.
We wouldn't need necessarily to back up and call it a study. We can leave it titled that way.
You can leave it titled whatever.
If the board decided to call it a study, we can leave it the map.
You can leave it titled whatever you want, because at the end of the day, all it is, is a potential roadmap. It's not a legal binding.
That answers my questions. Thank you.
In response to your questions, I notice what you're referring to is a title on the map that says Powhatan County Water and Wastewater Master Plan. Would be, I, we, I concur with what you're saying. We need to remove that title completely from this map, because at any time, the board could change this map without going back and changing the plan. So staff will completely remove that from the map that gets attached to this ordinance, and it will just say Water and Wastewater Service District, and it will have, and that will take care of that issue.
All right, thank you. And that's fine.
The map is part of the resolution, or we'll deal with later. It'll become, if this is adopted, then it will become part of that plan, is that correct? Or study, or whatever we call it.
The map will be, the, the map that we're talking about right now for this public hearing is the map that delineates this actual Service District.
Exactly. Right. And then that Service District will become part of that plan, is that correct?
If you choose to amend the plan.
Any amendment?
Well, yes, this, this map is in the plan. That is correct. This map is in the plan.
But they're related, I mean, one way to think of it is they're sort of related the way our zoning ordinance and our comp plan are related.
Correct. All right, at this time, we'll have a public hearing on ordinance 0215-1. Anyone wishing to come forward, please do so at this time. I see the one off closed, the public hearing. Any more questions or staff? Get a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to accept the Water and Wastewater Service District with the following amendments to renew Holly Hills subdivision, Genito Station, Walker's Ridge, Dorset Ridge from the service plan area.
Question one. I'll give a second. So, I do have a question. Can I ask a question for a good second?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moore, so you're asking to remove Holly Hills, Genito Station. What else was it?
Walker's Ridge and Dorset Ridge.
Walker's Ridge and Dorset Ridge. Mr. Chairman, I ask, Mr. Moore, the purpose of removing those would be why?
We had a town hall meeting back in September with people from all four subdivisions. Genito Station, one representative, there were 40 total, about 20 from Holly Hills, and about 10 from Dorset Ridge or Walker Ridge each. They expressed desire not to be placed into the Water and Sewer District, because they had a concern that once in the district, they could be forced eventually, because there are no guidelines written currently on what would happen with any residential water and sewer hookup. Be required to hook up, be forced to pay additional tax, if you can, tax the district differently eventually, given what about procedures to do so. And their feeling was they were buying a ticket in a coat, that they were put into the district, there could be owner, um, owner's consequences placed upon them without them actually getting water or sewer to their homes. And since this can be amended in the future, I know that the goal is to hopefully find some federal monies to, um, extend the water and sewer possibility into some areas like Holly Hills, but since this could be amended with only a action of the board, not a, uh, I think, we could only amend it. We discussed it last night. But since it would only be based, if you amend the map, it'd be, it'd be a better decision. But since it would only be advertised on a vote, and brought through a simple process, they would prefer to stay out.
Tucker, you have a question?
No, it was the same question you asked.
And I've, same thing I've expressed the last two times we've talked about. They were rather impatience about not wanting to put in for those reasons until they knew what would happen to them if they were added.
So we have a motion on the floor to amend the plan, the map, to exclude Holly Hills, Genito Station, Walker Ridge, and Dorset Ridge. Do I have a second? I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Tucker? Well. The motion, the motion does, is true too, so it is. The motion is two-two, so it is in favor.
The bylaws said to come back next month. There's a tie.
Absolutely.
The bylaws as if there's a tie.
I think the bylaws probably went, there's somebody absent.
I thought you said there's a tie, that's an absentee question.
Normally addressing these as an absentee.
I just think it's different.
A tie.
Well, why did it appear?
Right, it did. But the question says to come back on Mac or not. Mr. Moore, you going to answer that now?
Give me about two more seconds.
Well, it means it'll show up.
I'm a second.
It's a, next time it'll be a vote again, even if some of the board members are missing. All the ones that are here tonight don't have to be here next time. Whoever's here next time.
Do we advertise the public hearing? We hold it on the public hearing? So do we have the public?
We have the public hearing.
Okay.
Even though no one spoke, I would have to say I still do like this.
That will delay it two months because of we are required to advertise at any time. We had our public hearing. I'll put her to the board, and whatever they wish. We just want to let you know that we have a public hearing.
I just want to make sure people know that we will be holding on.
It will be part of the agenda, so.
Well, one option you could do is just keep the public hearing open. Just keep the public hearing open until the next time, so that we can take it with our own. And next time, if there's a tie again, it's, it doesn't continue.
Would the chairman, would the chairman hold it on the table?
No, he did. He did close.
He could vote to back up, since it's no discrepancy. It's the same evening.
And I would like to open the public hearing for the Board at 0-2015-01. Anybody like to come speak at this time, please, you can do so. Seeing none. Seeing none. So not close the public hearing, but we'll continue this till our next meeting on 3/2.
Mr. Chairman, whether I'm out of order or not, please say so. I would ask Palatane today to make sure that citizens understand what we just did, such that if indeed they want to speak, since the public hearing is going to be open, they know that they need to come to the next meeting and speak their heart. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Melis.
We'll move on to action items. We'll do 11A, Resolution 2015-8, amending this year 2015 staffing plan to increase the number of authorized part-time sheriff's deputy for the courthouse security. And Mr. Neal, Sheriff Neal is not here, so we will just, Mr. Waller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff Neal did ask if I would present this for him tonight, because he does a thing I need done this evening. This item is found on page 298 of your agenda. On January 20th, Sheriff Neal presented his request for his recommendation that you increase the part-time staffing at the courthouse from four part-time, excuse me, he presented from four part-time deputies to six, and he actually has three part-time deputies, and he's asking you to increase, increase the three part-time deputies to five part-time deputies. They are going to have court held at the courthouse more often than they currently do, and there are court security fees that are collected that have to offset the part-time deputies. At this time, we do not know how much additional court security fees will be collected, because we are not yet have the information about how many additional fees, but we will keep you advised as to the status of the court security fees that are collected along with the cost of the deputies. Standing in search of any, stand ready to answer any questions.
Any questions with the staff at this time? We had this as an action item in our workshop, we had a presentation from the sheriff claiming to, which was why the need was there. We just tried to answer questions about the fees and court costs, we've recovered. I did make the comment that without a staffing claim, there was nobody taking place, so I think, thank Mr. Waller again for having us, and helping to increase the number of people that we have, who are working again.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question, and I apologize for not being at the last meeting, where this was discussed. Do we have a figure of how much this is going to cost, yet?
The sheriff was not able to tell us, because he does not know, because he does not know the number of court days. He wasn't able to give us the number of hours, additional hour, that would need to be spent. And that's why we said, as we know that information, we'll bring it back to the board and present. And if we need to revise the sheriff's budget because of this, we will also bring it back to the board for consideration. He has no choice in the number of the court days being increased, and he has no choice on what that provides the deputies, the court securities.
Mr. Chairman, I might be able to help, Mr. Chairman, on this little bit, and I think Mr. Waller has a question for clarification of the workshop. That was, the issue was, is that he has a, he's trying to increase the pool, if I remember correctly, it was going to increase the pool of available part-time deputies who can serve, because they've switched the, usually everything is held on Fridays, and then, and just briefly, every, now his name is still locked, so he's not quite sure to predict how much is going to flow in there. And so to increase that pool by, correct, of available staffing, so he doesn't get caught short between the two days, and then, some of the fees that we do collect for every civil case is filed, which is what they're doing, goes to that court security to reimburse and to cover it, but it was hard to predict exactly a perfect match, I think, between the number that would actually be pulled from that pool and utilized in conjunction with the load. So there is a kind of a lost user fee here, where the more cases there are, the more funds are available to reimburse or to cover those part-time deputies serving the court security. And I guess the best answer you could give us at this time, based on, based on what is predicted to take place and happen, so I think that was kind of his reason to bring this, so that they wouldn't get caught short on the pool. And then obviously have some days where it's impacted or heavy, and they've got a short list, they can call it. The other members want to add to that. I think that's kind of what, it kind of summarized of the reason for it. I asked about the, for, what it is an FTE, put that in there and all that happened, so I don't know that much.
And I don't want to be alarmist at all, but I've shared with the board multiple articles from the National Magazine and what have you, of incidents in our courthouses across the nation. And I know that the sheriff is very aware of the situation, because he and I have talked about it, and I've shared those same articles with him. I think he's doing the right thing to protect the court and people who work in it. So I will be in favor of this.
He, 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 he could, well, if I could, you have a field, how many cases might go from Friday to Monday, and he's, he has no, no idea at this point, but they're discussing what, what he's, what he's, he's got to figure out.
Yes, he does.
We get a motion.
Do you accept Resolution R. 2015-8?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
For item 11B, action item, Resolution 2015-06, adopting the Palatane County Strategic Action Plan Pact, we'll take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is found on page 304 of your agenda. It is an action item tonight. Under the motion on the agenda, it does say a discussion item, but it is a, an action item. We're asking you to approve Resolution R. 2015-06. The board first discussed this at their workshop on July 10th through the 14th, when the board commended our three-year priorities. The board again discussed it at a workshop on December 15th, when we brought back to the board a draft of the strategic plan. And then we brought, brought back to you on January 20th for further discussion, a more refined draft than what we had brought to you on the 15th. We did make a change to the resolution. The resolution is found on page 305, and this, we hope, will address Mr. Hodger's concern about whether or not the, the plan has to be amended, and that where it says the Strategic Action Plan contains target dates set by staff, and the board understands and agrees that the document is a plan only, and therefore this resolution is not subject to amendment in the event certain target completion dates are not met. We hope that answered that question, and I stand ready to answer any other questions that the board may have of the Strategic Action Plan.
What question, staff at this time?
When you move, move to approve R. 2015-03. What's the changes, Mr. Waller, just getting a chair with us?
06. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes back here. Now moving on to item 11C, this is Resolution R. 2015-03, adopting the Palatane County Water and Wastewater Master Plan. I think, Mr. Melis, you did a good presentation.
Yes, it is Mr. Melis that will be presenting it to you. We have.
All right. In December 2013, Dewberry Engineers was awarded the task for creating a Water and Wastewater Master Plan for Palatane County. The scope of their work was to include the following. Evaluate the existing water and wastewater system. Evaluate future water and wastewater capacity demands. Recommend a plan to address operational and capital needs of the existing system to include estimated costs. Recommend a plan to address the estimated future demands for the next 20 years to include estimated costs. In October 2014, the final draft of the Water and Wastewater Master Plan was presented by Dewberry to the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission at a joint workshop. December 2014, the Planning Commission held a workshop in which they discussed the final draft of the Water and Wastewater Master Plan. On January 6, 2015, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the Water and Wastewater Master Plan is consistent with the 2010 Palatane County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. At the January 20th, 2015 workshop, the Board of Supervisors discussed the final draft of the Water and Wastewater Master Plan. The board also requested that any revised documents be provided to the board, which should have received revised tables 1-1, 9-1, 9-2, 9-1A, and 9-2A, which are pages 325 through 329 in your Agenda Pack. The staff's recommendation that the Board of Supervisors adopt the Water and Wastewater Master Plan has presented.
In addition to what Mr. Melis has pointed out, we also have added language to the resolution. We wanted to let you know that we did add this language. It is under the, be it further resolved, and it does say, this addresses concerns that the board, by adopting the plan, may be approving some of those large projects out in the future. It is the same wording that you adopted when you adopted your CIP, and it says, be it further resolved, that the Water and Wastewater Master Plan is a plan, and as such, is not to be construed as the Board of Supervisors' approval of any project, nor the budget and appropriation of funds for any project. With that, staff stands ready to answer any questions.
Any questions with the staff at this time?
I'd like to ask Marc, my question. Marc, you went back and revised the timetable for the projects. Could you briefly just summarize real quick what that, what that did?
Since the provisions that we undertook, as you remember, those tables that are all the same, slotted projects based on projected demand, recent space. So the existing table 1, 1-1, 9-1, those all have a note that those projects were based on population projections. We went back through and looked at it as well. We don't meet those marks, we may not base it, we're going to slow down in the economy of growth, or see, or see growth in the, we push projects out further, so we push some projects out of the years into 25 and 30 that were typically, that were shown initially in either 20, 2020, or 2025. Those tables are noted there, those, those project needs are not based on projections. What we just look at is, from our perspective, if we're not hitting our marks, making the plan for, then where do we see these project hits coming in play? So, just for instance, when we're looking at, the initial plan had the 5.2 were aligned in 2020. Well, we pushed it out to 2020. We've got another 15 years before we know, that's the time. So we have time, and I think what would be important, part of what this is, is the resolution, that this adoption, that doesn't prevent us of anything, it's just simply a roadmap. We worked with Dewberry, and we brought in one of our planning commissioners, who works in the water and wastewater business. The concept was, this just provides us a roadmap, when and if that development occurs. Now we know, have an idea that the future, frankly, it could be 2030, 2035, it'll really just be based upon growth, type of growth, and that's all the demand we see.
Marc, they, there, I was, concerned about was bringing the water from its present, you know, location, you know, across the river, you know, up 5.2, and then down 62. That was around 117 million.
17 million.
And where does that push that to now?
We push that out to in the 2025.
Okay. Because my concern was, that growth, you know, as a target area for growth in the county, the comprehensive plan, it's an urban development area, can't occur unless the water gets there.
Yeah, we have, there will be some growth, water demand, that first we develop, that we have in the courthouse area. There's a tad bit, a little bit of capacity in the aqua system, but it's kind of a, somewhat of, we know that as growth occurs, we need the water. So when we see growth here, we have this map, this plan, and we're going to say, we have an alternative to get in here. At that point in time, we're wrestling with, do we want to do it, do we need to do it, how, we have to take the work.
That's, that's the big question, is, have you afforded?
Yes.
Because as I've said before, we've tried some things, you know, with water and sewer in the county, and we thought it was going to pay for itself, and it really hasn't. We don't even have a policy regarding hookups, do we?
Well, we've got, we don't have a mandatory.
I mean, in terms of requiring people.
Right. We don't have a mandatory policy that, when we bring that line down, we're required, we do not have that. The order at this point in time doesn't require that. So there's some things that we need to wrestle with, because we go through, looking at that rate study that was being conducted, or bringing that board down, pay for. Those are some items that will have to be wrestled with at that time, by that administration.
And the board's already said it's going to do a substantive update to the comprehensive plan coming up in 2015. So I'm assuming that with this substantive update, we will be, depending on what comes out of the oven, we're going to be going back and look at those things that implement the comprehensive plan, such as water and sewer. Does that mean if we do a substantive update that changes some of the urban development areas, for example, would that mean we would go back and change the, excuse me, the Water and Sewer Master Plan?
I wouldn't think there would be necessity for us to go back and amend the plan, simply because this, this just gives us an opportunity, when we hit that mark, we know what improvements we can make. We may make changes to the comprehensive plan, and let's just say they eliminate all the, the, the UDA's. We may not ever hit any of those marks, and therefore, we won't need it, but if we do, we have, we have a document that we go to, that tells us, and spells out for us, actually improvements, along 60 or 50 to 50. So I don't think we would have to do an update, but then upon what happens.
What about the service district?
Well, if we eliminate the UDA's, I think we have.
I'm not saying all, I'm just, I'm just.
I think we, we need to have the service district piece in there, because we have a duty for sewer service along 60, that we, we have that service district there, to be able to provide opportunities.
Going back to what Mr. Moore brought up, about people's fear that they're going to be required to hook up to public water and sewer, because they're in the service district. What's your response? What's your response to that?
Well, I think the fear today, I understand the fear, but any discussion or any desire to hook up or that discussion, say, managed, we'd have to do that in the public, and there would be opportunity for the citizens to come out and express their concerns with that. Obviously, anytime we do anything like this, we were to just run water sewer to any one of those, their subdivisions in the district, as mentioned, we would have to go through a pool rate study, come up with a finite cost of what that would be, and we really need to sit down on those roads and talk about how to get in there, what those costs would be. So I think just by passing the plan doesn't make, doesn't commit us to anything. There's a lot of work that would have to happen for, once the decision is made, a lot of work that would be discussed with the Board, the administration, discussed with the public about how we feel about making improvements and paying for it.
Because if you've got three subdivisions, you have a trepidation about being in the service district, can you imagine what everybody else's subdivision on this map, what they're probably thinking as well? So it's going to have to be something, it's going to have to be addressed as to how we're going to do that to alleviate, you know, fears and misapprehensions about what's actually going to happen going forward in the county.
I think the important thing is, by adopting the map and adopting the district, we haven't committed anyone, or have we, we have any plans at this point in time of extending waters or any of those things. Those would be done on a case by case basis. In your plan, in the document that you have, we have some appendices in the back with breakout costs for some of those, but those would be customer driven. So Holly Hills got a petition together and wanted to come in and have the county discuss, looking at the work, and we would address that at that time that they brought that to us.
One of the things that the water sewer plan didn't do, and I appreciate the work that they consulted and entered, was to explain, how do we get to that point where we start paying for it?
Well, we had, I guess you have a kind of a check 22, we have the existing system that we're having to pay for, and we have the improvements. I think ultimately, the, either paying for the existing system or ways to pay for it more efficiently, or improvements really come down to, we've got to get a rate study, we break somewhere, we have to plug in the numbers, show us what that rate would be, what type of revenue that would generate, and build a cost that there's cost to make it really a self-sustaining plan.
Well, that's what I want to see. I'm interested in understanding how we're going to pay for, not only what we got, but what we're proposing in the future. I saw Johnny's here behind you, bobbing up and down, so Johnny, do you have any comment you'd like to make, and you seem to have some insight in this?
Well, I believe this is the first step, but the rate study is definitely the next step, and this is, this is the precursor to the rate study, we need the rate study afterwards. They would evaluate what we're proposing and the information, and they would evaluate our existing system as well as our customer base, and there, from there, they would come up with a rate study.
Well, it's not just rates, it's about users.
Correct, very correct.
And how do we get users?
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Chairman, one of the items that came up at the last board meeting, it was the board workshop, was whether this was a study or whether this was a plan, and I know at that meeting, Mr. Williams asked me what was the difference, and I, to me, it's semantics, and I know that the county attorney this evening, Tom Leslie, said it's semantics. But I want to let you know that after that meeting, I sent an email to the experts, I sent an email to Dan Lar from Dewberry, and also to David Van Gelder. He is on our planning commission, and he has helped us out through the entire process with the Water Wastewater Master Plan. And I asked those gentlemen, I said, "In the words or in the utility engineering profession, what is the difference between a plan and a study, and what is it that Dewberry provided to us?" And both of those gentlemen answered separately, not hearing the others, and they both said that what Dewberry has provided is, in the utility world, is considered a master plan. And if I could read from Mr. Van Gelder, he said, "What Dewberry put together would be considered a master plan since it provides a future path for utilities. Studies tend to be less definitive and provide a foundation for future decisions." He goes on to talk about it. And then Mr. Lar from Dewberry says, "The end product that Powhatan County received was a plan for providing the service districts with public water and wastewater infrastructure to accommodate the projected growth. That means that if the growth occurs as projected, the county has a plan for providing public water and wastewater. In order for us to prepare the plan, we had to conduct a study of the existing water and wastewater infrastructure, future growth projections, and future infrastructure. But at the end of the project, we prepared a plan based on our study of the subsystems." So while it, while to me, there's no difference, to these gentlemen who are well versed, obviously they're been working with utilities, Mr. Van Gelder's been working at the Hanover Utility Department for over 20 years, to them, there is a difference between a plan and a study. So I wanted to clarify that, because it had come up at the workshop.
So I understand, David says, you know, there is a difference between, David Van Gelder says, there is a difference between a plan and a study, so is that the type of word?
Let me clarify that.
Page 33.
It is on page 33. He says, yes, he said, "This is a plan, there is a difference between a study and a plan." And that is the same thing that Dan, our engineer that worked on it at Dewberry, he says, "There is a difference between a plan and a study, what we have is a plan." They both say it is, and as, that's why we wrote it in the resolution, it's not a commitment to do anything, and that's why we tried to make it very clear, you're not approving any particular project in this, or any particular timeline, you're not budgeting and appropriating any money for any project, it's just a plan which will guide us if the future growth develops, does develop.
Ken, I don't want, you know, harsh words or split hairs, but the thing that concerns me, and I said this the last meeting, is that the future projections can't happen, for example, in the village unless we bring water to the village. It can't happen down at east of 288 on 711 unless it has water and sewer. We have issues that we have to address with the comprehensive plan. I'm more comfortable, and I don't want to be pedantic, but I will, I'm more comfortable with this as a study, as a guide. I know what you're saying, that in your interpretation, the two are essentially synonymous, but I'm not sure everybody else will understand that. People in the profession, some will, I imagine most will, but to people in the public, picking up this, or following this conversation tonight, or following what we're adopting, they might not have that understanding. They might be looking at this as something that we're going to do. That's my concern.
Thank you, George.
I have one question. Since we didn't pass the ordinance and the plan references the ordinance, is there any issue on the composition of the plan with that not being done?
The plan does not reference the ordinance.
It references the map, and it says that it references part of it.
It does, and you can, the map, the map in the ordinance does not have to be with the map in the plan, the map in the plan is a plan. It doesn't mean that it has to be approved. What's approved by the Board is what they adopt when they adopt the ordinance. That's the approved sewer and water and wastewater districts are what you approve in the ordinance. Anything that you adopt in the plan, as we say, is only a plan. If you go to one, it would be a plan. It's very clear in the ordinance that you have-
I understand it's a plan, but I mean, like I say, it does reference the map, it says the map in the ordinance, so if you don't pass the ordinance, there's technically no reference point there.
The ordinance doesn't reference the plan, we-
The plan references the ordinance, it says that the map shall be the ordinance map, and we didn't pass the ordinance, so there's no map, is what I'm getting at. I believe the plan at one point says, the plan shall refer, it says to the ordinance map, does not, we had the discussion last night.
No, it does not, they-
I thought it said that it references back to the-
The plan does not reference the ordinance.
I thought it referenced the map. Am I wrong? I mean, I thought we discussed it last couple of days.
We just clarified, what I tried to clarify with Mr. Hodge is that for the map that is attached, that's going to be attached to the ordinance, we are removing those words that say, "Powhatan County Water and Wastewater Master Plan." So on the map that you have in front of you, that is to be attached to the ordinance, we are removing the connection between the ordinance and the plan, because you can have a different map that's attached to the ordinance as what is in the plan. And, and you will, in fact, from time to time, you will amend the map that's attached to the ordinance, you may do that at any time, but you don't have to go back and attach. So we are, by Mr. Hodge's suggestion, by removing that reference on the map for the ordinance, we have disconnected the tie between the two.
Mr. Chairman, I have a different issue, and that is, and I don't think this has been raised yet, I don't think it raises in the workshop. I know, I understand the discussion. The question is, is there an urgency to adopt the CBI, and if not, our own public policy, what are the reasons to adopt? Because I imagine we also talked about deferral of it, because you've got some of those things coalescing, is what's the consequence, either from a county administrative perspective, a planning perspective, a legal perspective? What if you defer for a while?
I can answer that, yeah.
I can't answer it from a legal standpoint. I can't answer it from a legal standpoint, obviously. When I presented to the Board a chart back in August of 2014, and we presented a chart, it's in front of you on the dais, and it's a pie chart that shows you how all the plans were put into place, and the Board had tasked staff with doing an economic development plan, and we let the Board know that there's many things that feed into an economic development plan, one of which is the utility master plan. And I presented this very chart that's in front of you in August, and I explained, the pieces of the puzzle are falling together. In October, you adopted a CIP, you already have a comprehensive plan, in July, you adopted your Board vision, and I pointed out that we were working on the utility master plan, and we'll be bringing that back to you. All of those feed into the economic development plan, and we are getting ready to start an economic development plan. So we were putting all the pieces of the puzzle together so that we could do that economic development plan. So that's, that's not a legal-
Right.
-point of view, so I have to-
From a legal point of view, again, think of this, it's really not much different than your vision statement that you adopted earlier.
Or the comp plan.
Or the, I mean, it's even less of a comp plan, you actually have some statutory requirements on adopting. This is probably more analogous to your vision, it's just your vision statement for wastewater, using picturesque terms, but, so there's no legal ramifications to it. Doing it tonight, you're not doing it tonight, it's just, it's just an adoption of this conceptual plan. So from a legal standpoint, it doesn't matter.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Williams, sorry.
That brings, brings forward something that makes for an interesting scenario. If the economic development plan is predicated on all these different dots going around it, and the dots change, and we know they're going to change, you know, the comprehensive plan's going to change, because we already said we're going to do a substantive update, which could affect those population projections that we have, that can't be achieved unless we have organ sewer at a couple of the UDAs that we have identified as targeted areas for growth. So I'm more of the mind that we don't need to do anything at this point, let's wait, and let's see, you know, what's going to come out of the comprehensive plan. I don't want to change the economic development plan by saying that I have confidence going forward that this comprehensive plan with the targeted areas for growth is going to actually realistically occur. I can, I can tell you from my standpoint, they're not going to occur. The way it's laid out today, we're not going to be able to afford those targeted areas. Give you an example, the middle of the county, and bringing 17 million, whether it's, you know, the next five years, 10 years from now, 15 years, I don't see that happening. I honestly don't. So I'm concerned that if we go forward with the idea that we need to do this such that we can develop an economic development plan, and we know these things are going to change, how good is the economic development plan going to be?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This is a proverbial, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? And I think what staff is trying to help us do is put some stakes in the ground. Mr. Williams is absolutely right, any plan, whether it's a corporate plan or a county plan, immediately upon completion, has to be modified on an ongoing, rolling thunder basis, it's just the nature of the beast. But if you don't start somewhere with a stake in the ground, and then modify that stake, they could pull it up and move it a few feet, whatever has to be done, then you never move forward. We always can say, we need to put it off, because we don't know what the future's going to be. The nature of planning, it recognizes, we don't know what the future's going to be. You use your wisdom and your experience and your best calculated guesses to, to say, this is what we believe is going to happen, and we're committed to doing what we can to make that happen. I think what staff is trying to do is appropriate, they don't have skin in the game per se, they're doing what basically we said we wanted in our bidding statement, which was, give us a robust economic development plan, give us a, a sustainable infrastructure plan. And this diagram that Pat put together, although it's very simplistic, is a perfect example of systems thinking. Mr. Williams is right, you squeeze a balloon, at 3 o'clock, it's going to pop out at 9 o'clock, but that's the nature of the beast, to try to get your hand wrapped around something, otherwise it just happens to you. And I thought we had very clearly gone on record saying, we don't want it just to happen to us, we want to take as much charge as we possibly can of our future, otherwise we surrender. We surrender to the possibility of what purpose we serve, except react.
Yes, we do, we do. We do need to do that, and we do like that, and put it on the table. What we have here is something others feel that's present, that this says that, you know, we're telling the whole world that we're going to have a stake in the ground, that we're going to have an economic development driver in the middle of the county, in the village. There's no way in the world that we can attract the type of business that we've talked about unless you have organ sewer. It's not going to happen. So if I know certain things going into it, you know, I'm cautioned to take those things into account, and not just say, well, we told staff to do it, we need to put a stake in the ground, and yet we know full well, you and I've had this conversation, that things are going to have to change with this comprehensive plan up there, because we can't afford it. It was a good plan when we adopted it, a lot of good work went into this plan. And we've learned so much, and one of the things that this water wastewater plan did for us, it actually quantified for the first time what it was going to cause to implement our comprehensive plan.
We did scare the hell out of him, didn't we?
It was a come to Jesus, wasn't it? So it, it was, you know, the first time we saw this, we were able to quantify, okay, we got this wonderful plan, this Southern Living home that we're going to build here in the county, and then we find that we can only afford $50 a square foot. That's the problem, I see. The, well, I don't want to say it again, I think I need to say it, but thank you.
Do you have, does Moore have anything?
Me, this is analogous to Mr. Tucker saying, you put forth a plan for you, you want to see things occur, so that if them occurs, if growth or revenue occurs there, and they occur to the conditions, we're trying to keep our thinking interactive in this, and have an idea out there so that we can work with private sectors, so that they didn't want to open there, you can say, we want the water sewer here, we can do a project together, do revenue sharing, things like that, puts everything on the table. It also clearly states to the community, this is what we see, where we see it occurring, and it's not just a one slip.
I go back to the planners of our county, by planning commissioners, Williams, Mr. Tucker, and I will, and the planning commissioner, God was the plan, planner quoted by of, adopt this plan. Furthermore, you have one individual in that planning commission who's very qualified, tells us it's a plan, it also says, this means, that means, that growth occurs, the projected career, the plan, variety, excuse that, Mr. Gill, Dave, and David.
the projected area of the plan, variety, excuse that, Mr. Williams, James, James Geller, he says, the master plan should support the comprehensive plan, which I believe this master plan supports the current comprehensive plan. I was not aware that he did. He decided to do a substantive update of the comprehensive plan, so we had stuff, I think it was on everything, and that work would be done in November, and the meeting with the planning commission and the board of the county, it's not how we would proceed, because I don't think on that, whether substances, or like minor or what, I was not aware that he decided. I do think we have a plan, if we do not have a plan, we will never get to them. It's just saying, we're going to develop, here's a water through master plan, the economic plan, and I don't think that you say that we will never have the density we need in the village, to the wrong state. If you don't have a plan, you never will have that. I'm in support of the adoption of this, where I can admit, and I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution 2015, DOD, Power of Towns, and to take it down. Second. Any comments?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I have a substantive update. Of course, you were chairman, it was a workshop, you know, and you turned, and Ms. Wilder said, you've got your answer on that, the substantive.
We have to anyway, it's the fifth year.
Well, you can, I think the issue was, we want to raise our hand, or...
Right, right, right.
And we said we want to do a substantive update, you turned fast, and said, I don't know what you're talking about.
I think that's added to the bill of work, I think that's correct, Mr. Williams. We have motion on the floor to approve the plan, we have a second.
Point of order, I think you said six instead of three, wrong.
I apologize, you are correct, the resolution 2015-03, adopting the Powhatan County Waste Water Master Plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three, two. We're going to item D, resolution 2014-74, ending the fiscal year 2015, Powhatan County operating budget by budgeting and appropriating 130,000 to VDOT revenue sharing fund, 130,000 capital maintenance reserve for the design of Dorset Road, that's Route 60 intersection, re-alignment and authorized in County Administration to execute all documents for this design, or resolution R-2015-15, requesting the removal of Dorset Road and Route 60 alignment from VDOT revenue sharing program, and adding the project to the six-year secondary road plan. Let me say, we will not be adding that to the six-year secondary road plan, we'll be asking if that is the resolution, resolution is adopted, to instruct the county administrator to begin the process to put it into six-year plan, we have to go through the public carry out, and all the other processes that take place, we're not, we're not putting it in the plan, we're asking the county administrator to begin the process, if that's the resolution that we're adopting. And Mr. Alton was giving a brief presentation on this, I think you heard this at a workshop in January, we also heard it in November.
The packet of information for you this evening is different with regard from the January 20th workshop, where we added the additional resolution, R-2015-15, directing staff to withdraw the project with revenue sharing, that is the main and key difference. We've discussed this, work this item several pages, again, it's the realignment of Dorset Road intersection, revenue sharing, VDOT revenue sharing project, at its current location to provide a better intersection alignment, addressing functionality and safety issues at Dorset Road and Route 60 on the south side. We've had conversations with the owners as directed by the board members, and if you have any questions regarding material aside from the additional resolution is the same, you have to answer.
Question there?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass resolution R-2015-15, requesting the removal of Dorset Road and 60 alignment from VDOT revenue sharing, and asking VDOT, we want to, asking staff to go through the process of VDOT, to make sure that we begin the process of putting this on their secondary six-year road plan.
Do I have a second?
One thing, here's a typo in the resolution, it says, the county has not funding, which we should say, the county has no funding, secondary road.
Comments? Mr. Chairman, just, I just got a clarification, maybe this was already mentioned, um, regards to the motion that's on the floor, and say you want to add a project, secondary six-year road plan, can we do that yet, or are we just recommending, you know, are we doing it?
We're recommending.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay, that's fine.
All this is an instruction to staff to start ball rolling.
That's what I think, just, I'm making sure we're clear on that, okay? Any comments?
I would have wanted to thank the Marshland families here, and they were concerned about their mother and grandmother's property, someone explained what the difference is, I could have, I could have...
Yes, Mr. Williams, would you like to?
And someone would jump in. If we had voted on the original proposal, which was resolution R-2014-74, the board would have appropriated 100, well, $230,000, $260,000 for revenue sharing, receiving 130 back to VDOT, and there would have been going forward a plan and studies that conducted to realign 60 with, by taking the resolution 2015-15, relaxments being taken, studies being funded or undertaken, just be added possibly to the second, to the six-year plan, and when is that going to be made? We could, we could double the paper, hey, we could add four or three, no later than May, it would be addressed in a public meeting, and there would be several, usually workshops with VDOT, to look at realignment of funding done through, by the source. All that would mean is, hey, we've got, we've got four, we're still correct, but right now that would be something that is need, if it gets on the land, it's going to be hobbled, and that could be this year, or five years, probably after the vote, I don't see a sensible difference, but we're going to do it, and they will, they will have it in place, it's important.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a comment. First of all, the vote, the study was issued, asked for by VDOT, it was to address safety, that's very important, and we typically have tried to address safety in our six-year secondary road plan, we do not have enough funds to do every safety situation that we're aware of, we try to be frugal with what we do have. It was not addressed in our first six-year secondary road plan conversation, because we thought that we had revenue sharing dollars assigned to this project. It has now become clear to me that we have no revenue sharing dollars assigned to this project at all, therefore, I cannot support a project that I know has no revenue sharing dollars assigned to it at all. I further will say that I would like to see the study done, when it is done in the six-year plan, I would ask VDOT to consider this. Across the street is a private road, it is not a public road. Makes common sense to me that to move a private road, it would be easier to move a, a state named payroll, so that should be considered. I do know there are times, and I will say this, and I will repeat this, that there are times when developers will think there are times when the county needs to facilitate to create economic development. We did that when we appropriated five votes to zero to spend money to design the water and sewer on Route 711. That was clearly a vote from this board to help facilitate economic development in the future, it makes good sense. So in the future, I will, if there is a need to put county funds on a project to create jobs, taxes, and those kind of things, I will support that. I am supportive of the motion to make sure, who has been presented tonight, thank you. Can we, we have a motion, we have a second, call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five, zero. At this time, we have no discussion items, we come to our second public comment period. I would like to remind you that we'd like, we invite the members of the public to share their thoughts on the matters and issues that are germane to the county business. This is not a form of criticism of specific individuals or attacks by any person or group, it is not the form of political campaigning promoting a business. Please keep your comments focused on the subject matter of which this board has responsibility, and please keep your comments for two minutes, and please state your name. Thank you.
Phil Cox, 1405 Giles Bridge Road. You started talking more and more about water and sewer, and we're on the cusp of being able to lock up a substantial amount of water rights. And one of the questions is really what you do with it, and I would urge you all to begin to think of water not necessarily as a liability, but as an asset. We have municipalities around us, particularly to our east, who need water. The sale of water, or excess water, we have the rights, potentially the rights to a lot more water than we're going to use in any of our lifetimes, or maybe even our children's lifetimes. We should think about selling those, and using that money to take care of some of our infrastructure needs. It's just a subtle switch, but it's, it's an asset in one sense, and not allowed to in the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Nelson Batterson, I live in Old Powdering Estates, and in listening to you all, and you were talking about revenue sharing money, most of you, I think, are aware of the situation that all the users in my neck of the woods on Page Road are having to deal with getting into Route 60 and getting back home again. And I'm going to make a suggestion that 130,000 was mentioned in there as revenue sharing money, anytime that comes up, maybe you can find a special place to put that money, because right now, their plans with VDOT don't start on anything to help us come out at the light going into Walmart until 2017. By then, those plans may be obsolete, and if we have to redo it, we might get it further delay. Two more years from now, I'll be 83, going on 84 years old, and I'd like to think that I'd get to come out and go in by that light one time while I'm still able to drive. So, just a thought, if you've got some extra money and you don't know what to do with it, and that's, not usually happens, but put it aside somewhere, try to help us, maybe speed us up a little bit, give us some help down there. And if you don't believe, if you're not used to it, come on down there and come to my house, and I'll give you a cup of coffee, and at 5:30, try to get into Route 60 going west, and you'll see what I'm talking about. Oftentimes, oftentimes, if my wife and I have to go west, we go all the way to the Chesapeake Line, and that light at Old Hundred Road will catch up, give a break in there, and we can follow that. Otherwise, you don't get out. And that's all I want to do, is just thank you for listening to me. I've kept pretty quiet the rest of the time tonight, so I won't bother you anymore tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Batterson, and you've been consistent with those comments for the last three years, probably more, if I remember correctly, even when we dealt with the Walmart situation. Thank you.
I hope you are.
My name's Jim Adams, I live on Rocky Ford Road, forgive my voice, I don't actually feel as bad as I sound. I came before you several months ago with concerns that we were considering an exception to the dark skies initiative that we had just passed a few years ago, when we developed the new sheets. And I was especially concerned that, that the lights of several other businesses would not be used as an example, that we would allow the sheets to build in the same way. I want to, I'm here tonight to tell you that I think the new sheets is an asset to our community, and the lighting is not as truce at all, and I want to thank our planning commission, and Mr. Cox has been, worked hard and made sure, I understand that, and I want to thank you for your time, I think the business is a real asset to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Anyone else? So, excuse me, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. I'm Katrina Blankenship, 1612 Judah Road. I just wanted to say for the record, and to Mr., for the board and Mr. Cox, the incident did not happen at the grand opening, it was later on that evening, and I was actually online, and to clarify, also, Sheets and myself and the journal actually worked for the first few days before the grand opening, for the VIP days, the ribbon, before the ribbon cutting, to promoting it to the community, and Curtis was there that day taking pictures at the ribbon cutting, and we really only want to fix these things in Powhatan, and the people in the community to not look embarrassed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. We now move to the county administrative comments, do you have any comments at this time?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to announce that we have completed our negotiations with the consultant for our economic development plan, and we will be signing a contract in the next few days with Spectrum Growth Solutions LLC. And at the board workshop on Tuesday, February 17th, the consultant, Faith McClintock, will present the process and respond to board's questions on the process for the economic development plan.
Thank you. At this time, we have more comments, did we have any more comments at this time? Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Hodger. Just real quickly, I wanted to explain a little bit on the, regards utilities master plan, we had a pretty lively discussion at the workshop, you may have not been, have been there, didn't say too much tonight, because I pretty much expressed it all at the workshop. But I think we even look at the chart that we even have up here, of the dots around the economic development plan, and I know that's been the mantra for, for some time in the county since, since this board came to, to office in 2011, but you look at all those dots around there, and you can maybe think of it as a stool with three legs, what's the most essential three legs to the stool? Well, obviously, you've got to have a comprehensive plan, you start there. I mean, even though it may not have the force of law, the bottom line is, you've got to have a plan, a plan says, this is how we're going to grow. You've got to have CIP, because that is going to explain how you're going to pay for this, basically, and what priority you're going to do it in. And a huge component of that, you cannot have developed a plan, it's in the center there, obviously, is the utilities master plan, because if you don't have water and sewer, we all know, you're not going anywhere, this engine's not moving, it has no engine. And certainly, you can look at water, obviously, differently, in the sense of liability asset, and I think this board has done that. But the bottom line is, Mr. Williams' point is dead on, you can plan and plan all day, but can you pay for it? That's the bottom line. You can dream all day, too. If you don't plan, finance that dream, realistically, it will not happen. So, those, that stool might be, the top of the stool might be economic development, that's true. So those three key legs really are the CIP, the CP, and master plan, and we're at the stage right now where we're up for an update on the comprehensive plan, and I think Mr. Williams is right, it's not going to be one of these window dressing ones, because what we've realized, at least with these utilities master plan, we have a cost issue. Credit card's pretty much maxed out, not much more on the credit card, so the bottom line is, what do you do? You've kind of hit the wall. So, that's why I was in favor of either deferring it until we actually coincided and adopted the comprehensive plan revision update, or consider it a study. I think that's important, it's not just word usage, study, plan, study, plan, okay. Even Mr. Van Gelder said, it supports your current plan. Well, the current plan was passed in 2012, and as even Mr. Tucker said, things change, you bet they do. Something happened in 2008 that had never happened in the United States of America, and hadn't happened since. We hope not again. Biggest economic downturn in U.S. history, next to the Great Depression, and we're still, still suffering the effects of that in the county. Not a way, it's been papered over a little bit by the Fed. So, I think it's important, when you have these discussions up here, it's not just word choice, and the experts say, this one person says this, there is a real reason for a difference in the, in the opinions, and that's fine, that's actually good, but you've got to keep that in mind, can we afford the plan we have? I don't think the prior boards really looked at that, because if you can't afford it, it's not going to happen. It won't. You want the Ferrari, or do you want the Cadillac? Well, if you want the Ferrari, you have to pay for it, how are you going to pay for it? You want the Cadillac, you have to pay for that. Everybody does that in your budgets, you do, you plan. Even whether it's homes or cars, whatever asset it is, in the county, it's a big asset, it's a huge piece of dirt, and you've got to decide to exercise the will of the people responsibly, and be able to exercise that will, so that it can be achieved in a, in a frugal fashion, and a necessary fashion, but it's, it's going to be afforded. So that's the reason for my vote, and even though it didn't prevail, that's okay, we move on, and we'll work together...